Hello, can you hear me? Welcome to our afternoon meeting here. I guess this evening meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order and I will have a roll call by our city clerk, Marcy.
The record will reflect that all members are present.
We'll have a pledge of allegiance and our invocation by Reverend Marty Harvey of the Body, Mind and Soul Spiritual Center. Welcome, thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for And let's just take a moment and bow our heads. Almighty God, we come on this day, celebrated by many as a day of love, knowing that we are to love one another each and every day, that our Creator is the source of all being and life. We know that we are a part of His plan and we open our hearts and minds to His guidance. We ask for patience, understanding, and compassion. We're thankful for Mayor Ritter and all of the council members and the time that they give to making our city a better place. We ask that your guidance and wisdom be with them. We are grateful for each and every person here and know that all present are receptive and open to the ideas that are shared this evening, wanting only the best for the whole. We give thanks for your love and for life itself. And now as you hear our prayer and as we proceed into the agenda for the evening, let us be mindful that you are with each and every one of us. Amen.
Thank you Reverend Harvey. We appreciate your coming, thank you. The Brown Act Notice of Simultaneous Meeting Compensation, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos sanitation district will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to the Buenos sanitation district ordinance 2006-1. Approval of the agenda by our city manager?
Mayor, there are no changes to the agenda.
We had no closed session today, so with that, we will go on to our presentations and we have a proposed new hospital concept presentation. I see Larry Anderson's name here, but you don't look like Larry.
If only I did.
No, you're not.
And I do apologize, Mr. Anderson was very much looking forward to being here today. He's held up in a meeting and I was crossing my fingers that he might make it before, but he trusted me to carry forward if that's all right with you.
Yes, it's perfectly fine.
It means no hard questions. But I also, I want to recognize as we go through this, our retired city manager Rita Geldert and city councilman Steve Gronky, both are on our Board of Trustees with the Tri-City Hospital Foundation. We do have a vision and with Larry Anderson coming in in just the last three years, we've had to respect very much the position of our current hospital at Tri-City Medical Center. The hospital now is 50 years old, we just celebrated our 50th anniversary, but the community is changing. According to Sandag, we're going to have a 20% increase in population by 2030. Our population continues to age, everyone outside of this room at least, and we're now serving about 500,000 community residents in the three districts or the three cities in our district, plus San Marcos, Fallbrook, and other areas that are currently using the facility. So we're having to build a dream of where we're going to be in the future. What I'm going to show you is just a concept of where we are today. The hospital and the foundation will spend the next year studying the concept and refining the elements, and within that year, we should be able to go to the district with the will of the people, so to speak. So first is actually the concept of the new Tri-City Medical Center that we expect to have completed within the next five to 10 years. Step by step, you'll be familiar with the white buildings that are currently on screen. That's the current campus of Tri-City Medical Center. That little white building that's sort of out in the field by itself is called our BAMs, it's the Business Administrative Management Services Wing. But as we begin to build, and if you've seen the hospital recently, we've already begun Phase One. Phase One includes that white building on the left, closest to the bottom of the screen, just above the proposed Phase One type. That's a 57,000 square foot medical office building that's currently under construction. It's already broken ground and the foundations are laid. When that building is complete, because it sits on a bit of a plateau, that will actually become the face of the hospital. It's what you'll see from Vista or it's what you'll see from the freeway. Right behind that, there is a six-story parking structure with a helipad. We actually own 35 acres. When the parking is corralled into a parking structure, it will open up 31 acres for us to build, and that's really the foundation for the rest of the steps as we grow. Phase Two includes, up toward the far right and top of the screen, is an administrative wing that will include conference centers, classrooms, outpatient services, and all of the hospital administrative services. The reasons we're separating that out, when you build an acute hospital, there's something called OSHPOD that I'm sure you know, but the cost of building an acute hospital is about $600 a square foot. The business buildings are about $300 a square foot. So any business functions we can pull out of the hospital will ultimately lower our overall expenses, so we're being very wise in how we allocate that. Between the parking structure and the administrative wing is the beginning of a patient tower and it's the critical care functions. That will be cardiac care units, intensive care, telemedicine, and the highest acuity levels in the hospital. That small area will hold about 144 beds and actually begin the launch of the new hospital Phase Three is the patient tower. It's projected to be a seven-story tower with ocean views from the third to the seventh floors, always a nice touch. But the rest of those patient, the rest of the buildings and the patient tower will give us another 216 universal beds, which means they'll all be single patient beds, no shared rooms. And the rooms are being designed so that the patient can stay in the room, but will change the nursing staff and equipment to meet their level of acuity. It helps in the healing process in the long run. Overall, it'll almost double the size of our beds. It'll give us about a million square feet on the entire campus when all is completed. That's going to be the new entrance, or at least the proposed design, coming into the emergency room. But here's what's really significant. Because the needs of the community are growing, we're going to keep all of the current campus and repurpose it to areas where we have a current need. There are some functions in the county, in the North County area, where we have no services like long-term care, or at least what's called long-term acute care, and geros psych. So we'll be able to open new service lines to continue to serve our community. Behavioral health will stay on the older campus. We'll have a new long-term care unit with 30 beds. The pavilion towers will be transferred to forensic medicine. Our current surgical suites, and we have 12 of them, we have more surgical suites than anyone in North County, that will become an outpatient surgical unit, so we can continue to benefit from those. A skilled nursing facility is proposed and our emergency department is proposed to become a new cancer center. So it gives full utilization of everything we have on campus and it's in good working order, so we want to be able to retain that. This is proposed to be the new entrance, the foyer coming into the hospital. Everything being designed with the healthiest elements that we're using environmentally now, very clean lines, lots of light, green plants. Our patient registration unit, all of that sort of fogged frosted glass will be private suites where everyone will be able to be interviewed and give their patient information with privacy and be well protected from the mainstream traffic. And that's the view that we're projecting from about the third floor. We actually had engineers go to the top of our tallest building currently and take the photo, and we've superimposed it on the rendering. But it does give us a very different feel for what we're going to look like in the And this is a rendering of the hospital at night. It's going to glow like a little lamp on the top of the hill, our beacon to healthcare and the overall design. In the back of the room, I have a model, if anyone would like to look at it or if there's questions, I'll be with it for the next hour, an hour and a half. And if you have any questions, I'd be delighted to answer or help however I can in Larry's absence.
And I apologize for not introducing you, Toby Ferguson. I should have, I was just kind of teasing you about Larry, but I forgot to introduce you, so it's nice to have you here.
And I didn't introduce myself, I apologize.
No, it's okay. Do any of you have any questions? Councilmember Lopez, and then?
Thank you, thank you Mayor Ritter. How do you plan on paying for this? How we, what's the process? Is it going to the voters, or?
Actually, there's no heart to go to the voters right now, at least from the executive wing. We have the first elements of it, if I can back it up. Phase One is already under construction and as you probably know, the hospital is now profitable with 18 months of consistent and consistently growing profitability for the first time in 13 years. Under the new executive leadership, they've completed a pretty significant financial turnaround. So the medical office building and the parking structure will come out of our current profits. The administrative wing will probably start looking for funding and we already have funding fairly well, we're in those discussions, so we're fairly well along that track. We just have lowered our interest rates once again, so we are doing better and better as we're able to confirm some of our funding and our changes there. We will count on philanthropy, we'll be looking at funding and possibly some federal programs and using our own profits to revitalize the campus.
Will you be as big as Escondido or a little smaller, or what kind of?
Wow, I'm not sure of their square footage. I don't know how to answer that, but I can find out for you.
Uh huh, uh huh, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I might have missed it, but what's the timeframe, say, for Phase One and then Phase Two?
Well, Phase One, we've begun. The medical office building is in construction, it should open, I'm hearing, spring or summer. The parking structure begins right away, there's no break in the construction for that. So we expect to have everything done within five to six years, and much of it's going to be timed based on our own profitability.
All the phases?
All in phases.
All phases, though, in five, six years?
That's, that's the proposal, we're working toward that. And it will depend very much on our profitability, able to stay ahead of the game as we have and continuing to grow, and also securing new funding for some of the new structures.
I think it'll be a fantastic addition to North County, for sure.
I'd love to hear that, thank you.
Are there any other questions? If not, I would just thank you for coming and sharing all this with us, and we're excited to see you grow.
You will watch us for the next year as we study it, and then hopefully we'll come back to you with the end of that period with the final plans.
It's really nice to hear you're profitable, too, that's very nice.
Thank you, and thank you for giving me the time.
Congratulations on that. Thanks Toby. The next thing we will move to is our consent calendar. The recommendations on the consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless something is pulled. The items are C1 through C10, and I have C5 pulled and C7 only if there's questions. Councilmember Lopez?
Yes, thank you. I believe the lady left something on the counter. Is that yours? Is that your phone?
It's a clicker.
Or is that part of, okay, it looks like your phone, okay, thank you. Along with that, with item, I vote no on item number 10.
Okay, well, I have, need a motion and a second on that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for the consent calendar.
Okay, do you have a second? Okay, have a motion in a second, and then we, so we'll do everything except for item C5. You had no questions on C7, correct? Okay, then we'll do C, then everything except for C5. Please cast your votes. Okay, there we go. Okay, motion passes, and Councilmember Lopez votes no on C10. Okay, then the next item we'll go to will be C5, which is our amended enforceable obligation payment schedule, redevelopment obligation retirement fund and successor agency cooperation agreement. So maybe a short report and then we'll go to the question.
Good evening, my name is John Meyer, I'm the interim director of redevelopment and housing, and with me this evening is Jeff Zinner, our redevelopment and housing manager, who will provide you a brief staff report.
Thank you, John. Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, as the city council and the board of directors of the successor agency, you'll be asked to take several actions, including adoption of an amended enforceable obligation payment schedule, approval of a cooperation agreement between the city and the successor agency, and establishment of a redevelopment obligation retirement fund. The proposed cooperation agreement, in essence, allows for the city to provide services such as staffing to the successor agency, and in turn to be compensated for those services. The redevelopment obligation retirement fund is simply a fund into which the county will deposit funds to be used by the successor agency to make approved payments. The proposed enforceable obligation payment schedule is very similar to one that the city council recently adopted. The schedule presented to you tonight is for adoption by the successor agency, but it also now includes obligations in the month of June to address September bond debt service payments. We simply moved those payments up until, up into June, so there's no new obligations. These actions are all part of the process to implement AB 26, and that concludes staff's presentation. We're available for questions, thank you.
Are you, do you have any questions, or do you want to hear the speaker?
Good evening and happy Valentine. When we first started out back on the 10th of January, we had a readable document. Now that you stretch this thing out, you really get eye strain trying to read it. If I can ask the legal department a question or two. When we first started out, we didn't know the difference between orderly liquidation under bankruptcy and dissolution according to the, according to the state. Do we now know that, what the difference might be?
Mr. Abel, I don't understand your question, to be quite honest.
Well, under chapter seven bankruptcy, okay, you go through orderly liquidation. Under AB 26, they talk about dissolution, dissolution, whatever. Are they one and the same or not?
No, they're unrelated. Chapter seven is a liquidation of a private bankruptcy.
Sure.
As opposed to a chapter 11, which is a working.
I fully appreciate that.
If a public agency were to go into bankruptcy, it goes under chapter nine.
Okay.
Not chapter seven.
All right.
It has no relationship.
There's no relationship, okay. Do we know now the, if there are secured creditors and unsecured creditors?
There are no secured creditors in the sense that I think you're referring to it in the bankruptcy sense, because the bankruptcy rules simply don't apply. Obviously, there are secured creditors in the sense that everyone who holds our bonds has a security interest in all of those issues, and there may be also various contractual security interests in, in various property transactions. But the distinction between secured and unsecured, again, this isn't a bankruptcy, it really doesn't have the same effect at all.
Okay, what about all these contracts that are ongoing? Is there any way to get, get them canceled? Environmental assessments, civil engineering services, the whole nine yards on page seven.
The continuation or the cancellation of contracts is something that will await the, working with the oversight board, which is to be appointed specifically for those purposes. So it'd be premature to even speculate as to which contracts, if any, would be canceled at this point.
Okay. I, I just, I'm awed by the $884 million price tag that this list represents. That's a huge number, especially when you look at the statewide situation. It's been reported 425 agencies went out of business on the first of the month, and the total debt load or the total accumulated is on the order of $36 billion. Here in Vista, we're just under a billion. Baffles my mind totally. Thank you.
And Mayor, I might clarify that the enforceable obligation payment schedule is like casting a wide net. We talked about that last time. So the 884 million that was referred to, that's not what we have in debt right now. That is what we, if, if we could carry out all the projects that we envisioned to fruition, that's what it would cost. But obviously, we don't have that amount of money in debt right now.
Okay, Mr. Abel? Do you understand that?
I think so, but I, it's a whole new dog game for all of us.
It is for everyone, it is, we agree. Okay, so I would need a motion for approval. Oh, Councilmember Gronk, or, Mayor Prochem Gronky first, and then I'll motion for approval.
Thank you, Mayor. Maybe we can clarify our point there. Mr. Mayor, when we talk about the bonding that we presently have outstanding, that bonding will be paid by what year?
I believe 2028.
Okay, and?
It's 2037. Oh, 2037.
And those bonds are secured by the tax increment that's presently in place?
Correct.
So when we dissolve redevelopment agency, and that's still questionable about how that whole process is going, because it seems to change all the time, but as we dissolve that, anybody that's a bondholder still has a secure line of revenue coming back to them from our tax increment.
That is correct.
And that will not go away with the dissolution of redevelopment?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have a motion?
I make a motion to approve item C5.
Councilmember Aguilera, did you have something?
I'll second it.
Did you have something else? Another question?
No, I, I just.
It's okay.
Yeah, I'll make a quick comment, I just, I kind of liken this to my wife and I sitting down discussing, okay, we're gonna maybe open up a line of credit, yet it doesn't mean that we're actually gonna get it either, as far as credit goes, and so we haven't taken that step yet.
Doesn't mean you're gonna spend it either, just open it up.
Doesn't mean we're not gonna spend it either, so that's the way I look at this, so. But with that, I'll second it.
Okay, you have a motion in a second. Please cast your votes. That motion passes unanimously. The next thing on our agenda is the fiscal year 2011/12 second quarter financial report on this discussion item. Dale Nielsen will do a little report for us on that.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the city council. Tonight, I'm going to present to you the third quarter financial report for the six months ended December 31st.
Second quarter.
Second quarter, I'm sorry. And my name is Dale Nielsen, I'm the finance manager and treasurer for the city of Vista. At this point in time, general fund revenues and expenditures are within budgetary expectations. Exhibit three, found on page 10, provides budgetary and actual revenue information for the general fund as of December 31st. As of December 31st, the general fund has received about 40.3% of its total budgeted resources. The first six months of any given fiscal year are generally kind of light or dry when it comes to revenues, because there are a couple of very large revenue sources that the city does not receive until the second half of the fiscal year. Among these are some property tax that we get that used to be vehicle license fee money. In this particular year, we received our December property tax payment from the county on December 6th, which was prior to the 10th, when everybody's property tax payments were due. So we got another substantial payment in January. We also have a franchise payment from San Diego Gas and Electric that is about $1 million each year that we don't receive until April. In addition, there's a number of revenue items that, from a cash flow basis, we receive in July every year, that get pulled back to the prior fiscal year because they belong to that year. Exhibit five on page 15 presents similar information for general fund expenditures. These right now are at about 41.7% of the total amount appropriated for the year. Revenues at 40.3% and expenditures at 41.7% is no cause for concern, as it is simply due to a timing difference between when we receive funds and when we spend them. Typically, our expenditures are done relatively smoothly during the year, but as I just discussed, revenues are more weighted towards the back half of the fiscal year. In fact, if you, I went back and looked on the first quarter report, and revenues were 16% and expenditures were almost 19%. There are three recommended operating budget changes at this time, and detailed discussion on those items can be found on exhibit two or page nine of the report. The resolutions to adjust the operating and capital improvement budgets for the city can be found on exhibit 11. Also included in the second quarter report is the auditor's annual review of our receipt and use of our proposition L, sales tax revenues. This report can be found on exhibit 12 or page 26 of the report. There is also a recommended personnel change that is discussed on exhibit 13, with changes to the class and compensation index on exhibit 14. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Councilmember Lopez?
Thank you, Mayor. It's kind of like the stock market, you, you look at it for the whole year, you know, it might be down a little bit, you know, this month and next month, and at the end of the year, it kind of averages out. What you're saying is that, right now, we've actually spent a little more than, than we brought in, correct?
Through December 31st. But had I moved this report five days into the future, it would have been different.
It'd be different, so, not to get too alarmed over this.
No, no.
And a question, since we have new hotels now here in our town, is that helping considerably?
Yes.
With the TOT, with the TOT tax?
Yeah, that, that has made a significant improvement in that particular category. We have the, the two new hotels, the one is not quite open yet, but we have a full year's revenue history on, on the, the first one that opened, and that single hotel basically doubled our transient occupancy revenue from around 300,000 to 600,000 a year. So that, that's looking up. But once again, in the overall scheme, you know, it's not a huge revenue source, but every bit helps.
Now, the, the revenue from the, the new one that's gonna open up, that will not affect us until the last quarter of this next, of this year, correct?
I believe that.
That's, that's correct, it'll open up on June 1st.
Yeah, so then that, we won't see any of that until the end of the year, correct?
Correct. Well, we'll get, we'll get one month come back into June.
Okay, thank you. You're doing a good job.
Thank you, sir.
May Prochem Gronky?
So we're looking into that crystal ball now, and then we can say that, as far as this is concerned, there's been a little uptick in the, in the economy. You're seeing a little bit more in sales tax?
Yeah, sales, sales tax is picking up a bit, property tax.
Property tax revenues are still kind of dragging along due to the whole, you know, housing market issue. And I wish I knew when that was all gonna work itself out, but honestly, I can't say. But I think consumers are gaining a little bit more confidence again, are out there spending their dollars. And I'm, like I've said before, we're, we're cautiously optimistic.
Good, good. Well, thank you for your report.
Thank you.
Do I have any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll go ahead and make a motion for this item.
Do I have a second? Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay. Please cast your votes. Motion passes unanimously. And that ends our discussion items. And the next thing on our agenda will be oral communications. I have two speakers. First one is J.C. Nguyen.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. This is J.C. Nguyen again. Coming as promised last year to Santa Claus to come help the Easter Bunny. And I'm just gonna wanna kick off the 2012 campaign. Tomorrow will be the 15th, so I figure we'll get it started earlier than last year. And the goal is to raise approximately $3,500 to put on a first-rate Easter egg hunt for the kids of our community. And as my hope is always, that our, our family, our community family here, all of us, city councils and, you know, everybody all together, just get together like last time. We get an amazing group of volunteers out there like the last time. And lots of balloons and face painting, and kids running all over the place. And plenty of candy and Easter eggs for the little guys to go run around and gather up there at Bringle Terrace Park. The date, we reserved the park for the 7th from 9 till noon like the last one. And I got the, the Pride of Vista Lions are gonna co, our sponsor. And once again, I got a group of Boy Scouts and church groups and, and volunteers of all kind already stepping up. So I just wanna come and have everybody know that we're gonna really start, starting tomorrow and raise the money and put on a first class for all of us. So we can all be proud of our city of Vista throwing a traditional Easter egg hunt in the park for our kids, like all years.
Thanks, J.C.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to say something.
Okay, councilmember Lopez?
I would just like, yes, I'd just like to say that you did a great job last year on a short...
Not me, a lot of people did a great job.
A lot of people, but you're, you're the leader. And for, you know, 11th hour, you did a tremendous job. I was there. I seen the volunteers you got, and I seen the families that came out, that were very happy to come out and find those little, little Easter eggs. And, you know, keep up the good work, and we're behind you there.
This is something that we all gotta do, 'cause we're, we're all family, man. We're all Vistons.
Thank you.
Vistons for Vista, that's what it is.
Is it April 7th?
April 7th, yeah, Saturday, in the park, okay? Thank you.
Thanks. Renee Glatsba?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members and staff. I'd like to read to you my letter that I wrote to you February the 7th. As a reminder, please, nothing good comes from evil. The beautiful city of Vista should never be divided city to sell alcohol beverages at St. Patrick's Day Parade. Rod Run, Strawberry Festival's Earth Day at Bringle Terrace Park is a day that is intended to inspire awareness and appreciation for the earth's natural environment. All Vista Village Business Association's street events need to be family-friendly, business-friendly, without their alcohol permits. Yes, I did speak with the director of Vista Village Business Association 2612, and the comment was, it is for social. Social gatherings can be held at dining free fine restaurants in Vista that will provide the customer the beverage of their choice. As you know, Mayor Ritter, Councilman Ritter. So bring on exciting, family-friendly businesses, exciting, friendly families to enjoy the St. Patrick's Day Parade on Beautiful Vista, March 17th in the city's historic downtown, where shopping and eating is available for the families to enjoy and remember. Hopefully, there will be inviting rides for the youth to enjoy, and a climbing wall, et cetera. Animal rides too, nyambas and ponies are both. Remember also, there are, as told to me, 2002, 312, 108 documented gangsters from age 14 to 50 years old living in Beautiful Vista. Remember also that it was a teen homeboy who struck Isaiah Wallace 101810 while drunk driving with his friends and seriously injuring Isaiah, who is now at Children's Hospital, as of 2212, trying to recover. The youth of today need you to be their leader for their health, safety, welfare, education, where they live, play, learn, and work. The Vista Community Clinic is reaching out to the youths and families. They need you to stop the alcohol beverage licenses and keep always family-friendly, businesses-friendly, and BBVA events and other events that invite youth with their families in the beautiful city of Vista. Can and will you do this for them? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Glatsba. With that, we will go on to our remarks. I'll start with councilmember Lopez. You wanna start?
Thank you. This last weekend, we had a young lady who passed away, which was too young. A great singer. I, I never met her, but it was all Whitney Houston. It was all about, I believe she had problems. And it started years ago, and it was, I believe it... The result will be, you know, probably drugs or alcohol. And it's been a problem. And we've lost several people over this last year. And young people have a tendency to, you know, get, get involved with that kind of stuff. And, and I'm not saying all, but make that a lesson, or look at what happened to young people when they get involved with drugs. I lost a brother because of drugs. And, and I loved my brother, but there was nothing I could do about it, other than to say that I loved him and I was there for him. There's young folks here today. Think about that before you do that. You have your whole life ahead of you. Get an education, have a family, enjoy life. And just don't do that type of stuff, because it's, it's a one-way road. It's downhill. The lady who just spoke, you know, sometimes, you know, you, I know how she feels about it, but, about drinking, but just, just don't do it, you young boys that are there, because it's, it's a one-way street. Also... There was a couple things I had to show, show, talk about here. Oh, the library has purchased a kite, and it will be put up. And I'm telling you, I think it's a great-looking kite. And it, I'd like to thank the library or the people who, who purchased that, because it's gonna be quite an addition down here. And thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Coles?
Yes, thank you. I, I would second our caution to young people against drug and alcohol abuse, because that certainly has, for my lifetime, been a, been a scourge against our youth growing up. And it seems to be an ever-ending battle, so we need to remain vigilant. I wanna wish everybody a happy Valentine's. You know, what a, what a great place to be on Valentine's Day here. Voting on the future of our city. J.C., thank you for all you do to keep our city kid-friendly and, and a fine place, a fine representation of family values. And, and for everybody else who has come out for their Valentine's evening, there's a, there's a better life out there with dinner, dinner, or movie, or chocolates with somebody. So when you leave here, go have fun. Thank you again.
And welcome back from Australia, visiting your family.
Well, I wasn't gonna bring that up, but I, I, we just got back Sunday from a two-week visit in Australia, one week with our son in Sydney, which was phenomenal. I had no idea that Sydney especially is such a phenomenal waterfront city. It's got great attractions, great opportunities, and we had a wonderful time. Problem is, I, and Mayor Ritter mentioned that I looked dark. The ozone layer is kind of depleted down there, so you have to be very, very careful. They, they do not allow sunscreen less than SP 30 to be sold in Australia.
Really?
Yeah.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Yeah, I'd like to report on a good weekend. Was participating with the Amigos of Vista Lions Club, who had a pancake breakfast. And I'd like to thank all the people that were there, many people from the city. This event raises money for our youth basketball program here, run by the city. So I'm not sure what the exact numbers were, but I think in years past, we've raised about $6,000 to $7,000. The money's used to purchase things such as scoreboards and other items such as that that you see at Bringle Terrace. So it was very successful. We had more people this year than ever. I was making pancakes from 6 till 11. So we estimated that we served over, easily over 1,200 people. So it was very successful, and it was a good event. So I wanna thank the people of Vista that were there and staff that helped out. I can't remember the gentleman's name. He's new to us this year that helped out there at the senior center. But my hat's off to him. He, he did a great job. So, thank you.
Mayor Prochem Gronki?
All I can say is I'm, I am invited to the St. Patty's Day event by the BBVA. I wanna thank the BBVA. They've done an excellent job. I think they've really turned a corner. And I think this'll be another signature event for them. They've come up with the Strawberry Festival, which is just wonderful. And I think we've got another winner right in this one too, with the St. Patty's Day.
My job was cooking pancakes. I threw out the ball for the Vista Girls Softball League, except that it's a bigger ball, and it stuck to my hand, 'cause I was holding it for a long time. So when I went to throw it, it went way up in the air. It's a very bad pitcher.
Yes, did you have sweaty hands?
They probably won't ask me again next year. I'll find somebody who can throw the ball. A couple things. Little Women, the musical starts on Tuesday at the Abo through March 11th. So if any of you haven't seen that, that's gonna be a fun, fun show. And then one other thing, on a, on a sad note, C.G. Ross, are you back there still, C.G.? I can't, it's, it's dark in those rooms back there. She's still there? She is leaving the North County Times at the end of the week and returning to Iowa. I told her she's gonna miss us. The weather here is a little better than Iowa. But she's gonna be taking a position as an associate editor for a newspaper near Cedar Rapids. And so she's just been great to work with, and we're gonna miss her. So good luck, C.G. Yeah, so everybody, when, when she comes out of her little place back there, y'all say, say goodbye to her. So anyway, that's all I have.
We just got her trained.
We just got her trained. She's done a great job.
Mayor, I just have a couple things. I wanna let the council know we're actively pursuing the oversight board to our successor agency. So hopefully, we'll be formalizing that in the next month. We're continuing to track the redevelopment legislation, the cleanup legislation, and we're hopeful that some of that legislation will actually pass. And it was great to see the Massey BMW commercial on the Super Bowl.
Oh, yeah.
Touting our, our new ownership in the BMW dealership. And I just wanted to wish you all Happy Valentine's Day.
City Attorney, Daryl Piper?
Happy Valentine's Day, everybody, and hope you have a wonderful evening.
Thank you. City Clerk, Marcy, did you wanna say anything? Happy Valentine's Day, Kathy? No, not there, okay. Okay, with that, we're adjourned.